To order at 7:02. Since we do have a Zoom, we will do a quick roll call. So we'll just start on this side, I guess.
Rachel, I.
Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, here.
And Prabhu, can you acknowledge that you can hear us?
Prabhu, here.
Great. So, welcome, everybody. October, it's the month of Halloween. I was going to say it's a nice fall week, but the colors are here, but the temperatures are not. So that's good. I guess we're enjoying the last few days of sunshine. I guess we'll just get, jump right into the agenda. First order of business is approving the minutes. We have two sets. The first one is last month's minutes, so I'll entertain a motion to accept them. So moved.
And seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the 9:24, 25 minutes? They looked great to me. Okay, so hearing none. All those in favor? By roll call.
Rachel, I.
Prabhu, I.
Prabhu, I. Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, I.
Chris, I.
Great, thanks. I declare the motion carried. The second minutes are from March 15th, 2023. So, realize some of us were not here during that, but we still have the purview to review and approve them. So I'll take a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the March 15th, 2023 Bolt Special Joint Meeting with FinCom meeting.
Motion made by Erin. Seconded by Rachel. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Since none of us were here, like normally, like we, I would abstain from voting, but like, do you need everyone to still vote?
I think we can, correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, but I think we can vote even though you weren't here. You can look through the minutes and see if there were any questions.
Okay.
Yep. I looked through them. This was the FinCom meeting, so it was really just one that the trustees were attending. We actually did not, I don't think we contributed much to the conversation because most of that was the library director.
And the FinCom approved it, too?
I don't think the FinCom approves our meeting minutes.
Okay, because those are, they came, okay.
Correct. They would have their own set of minutes from that meeting. All right, then vote by roll call.
Prabhu, I.
Rachel, I.
Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, I.
Chris, I.
I declare the motion carried. Next up is the four bills. There's warrants 14, 15, 16, 17. All of that is also in the packet that Kim sent around. I think certainly in the past, we've been voting and approving them in bulk, so I think we can do that, too, unless there's specific questions. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the four bills.
I will make a motion to vote to approve warrants 14, 15, 16, 17 in a consent agenda. That work?
Yep. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded by Carrie. Any discussion on any or all of the warrants?
Well, I think that was just to, we haven't.
Oh, you just did for the consent agenda. Thank you. Any discussion on voting them as a consent agenda?
No.
All right, hearing none.
Prabhu, I.
Rachel, I.
Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, I.
Chris, I.
I declare the motion carried. All right, then I guess, so I'll make a motion to
approve warrant number 14 at the amount of $6,934.81. Warrant 15 for $6,823.33. Warrant 16 for $8,625.18. And warrant 17 for $3,299.29.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded by Rachel. Any discussion on any of the warrants? All right, hearing none. Those, all those in favor?
Prabhu, I.
Rachel, I.
Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, I.
Chris, I.
I declare the motion carried. I guess while we're on bills, I think, I don't know if we're going to mention this later, but Rachel, but the, I think it's been working well. I mean, it's been a little challenging getting trustees to sign it, but I think we should continue doing that, at least for the short term. So unless there's an issue from the board, we will continue to sign bills Wednesday night to Thursday afternoon. Yep, Kim?
There's a yellow folder floating around.
Yeah, it's right here. Yes. So we have two signatures on them now. I don't know if Doug and Rachel would like to.
Yep.
Yeah, I would like to reinforce that we're not just looking for two signatures, for people to just, you know, just to go, right? I go because I don't know who's going.
I think the calendar that's been up has been really helpful. And so I, I think that since we've had that up, it's been pretty clear on who's going. So I think we just need to make sure that everyone signs up and is accountable for their day.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this board supports the budget and, you know, it's good to be aware of where the spending going. Certainly, the bigger ticket items, I know a lot of these have hundreds and hundreds of small little purchases, but they all add up and it's good to know, it's good for the board to be familiar with the expenses.
Right, so you're advocating for more people to have eyes on it?
Correct, correct. It's not just to get two signatures, it's really to get the board to become familiar with the invoices and bills. Great. Any other, Kim, have you seen any other challenges? I mean, has it been going well for the last couple of weeks?
Yeah, it has been going well. As Rachel indicated, I think that sign-up sheet is helpful. So I will send a reminder out tomorrow, just with the link, so people want to continue to sign.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is ongoing business. Friends update by Carrie.
Yeah, so I met with the friends last week. They're ramping up to get ready for Grafton Celebrates the Holidays and deciding what they're going to do to support that activity. So that's, that's great. In order to get ready for that, they're meeting a little bit earlier next month than usual. So it's going to be actually Wednesday, November 5th at 7:00 PM instead of the, you know, the normal Tuesday, second Tuesday of the month. So that's really the only update.
So are they calling for any help from the trustees? Is there any opportunity for us to do outreach? Or do you feel that there's opportunity for outreach?
I think they always welcome, you know, trustees to participate in any of the events. So, you know, they'll be at the library during Grafton Celebrates the Holidays. They're going to be selling ornaments and doing book bundles and that kind of thing. So certainly, if, you know, if trustees are available, I know, like, that's where I usually, you know, help out on Grafton Celebrates the Holidays. So I'm planning on going, but if anybody else is available to do that as well, that would certainly be welcome.
Yeah, so thank you for volunteering to help also, you know, and to represent the trustees. You know, the other side of it, too, is, you know, it's an opportunity to talk with the public, you know, as, as an official, right, as our official responsibility. So, but, you know, put the trustee badge on and walk around and say hello to people, wish them a happy holiday and, you know, so I'll probably end up going.
Oh, terrific.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to worry about a quorum. If we're just visiting the library.
Yeah, I mean, it won't be any, you know, official business or anything, so yeah, I think we're fine.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Thank you. That's the only ongoing business we have. Next would be the policy committee update by Erin. And included in the materials was a program policy draft, or final draft.
Yep. So we had a really kind of unique and productive meeting. Unfortunately, Kim couldn't be there with us, but Jean and I were there and Prabhu was available to come, so we couldn't get the Zoom started, but we've, you know, remediated that. So we just met in person, which was really great. And, you know, Jean had, had gone through the program policy and had some really great notes and feedback. So between the three of us, we went through all the kind of red, red notes that the legal had sent. And if you look, if you don't have it quite in front of you, do you guys know what page it is?
It's 48.
Starts on 48.
48. You'll see the additions and strikeouts and things either that the policy committee felt was great to include from the commentary of the legal or things that we felt added clarity and, or needed to be added. So what you're seeing is the final draft that is ready to be voted on for our program policy tonight.
Can I ask, was there any, because it sounds like it came back from legal and then there was a review to accept it and there might have been a couple additional changes. Was there anything that was changed specifically that legal didn't recommend that you could call out? It, it just seems they're all in red, so I'm not sure which ones was the legal feedback versus that, that final feedback? And then it, it is material if it will have to go back to legal?
So, excuse me, a lot of what came from legal was suggestions or, or you might want to say it this way, they didn't actually redline and correct a lot. It was just commentary on, you might want to say this, or you might want to do that. So it was really just feedback, not things that were kind of blatantly wrong or you may want to rethink this, right? So everything in red basically represents the policy committee's own original thought processes and commentary with legal as guidance. Does that help?
Yeah.
Because I, I don't think I'd be able to tell you offhand exactly, you know, what they recommended to put in and what we took out. If that's required in order to vote on it, I'm sure we could work on that.
Any other? Or I should say, not any other, are there any questions for Erin on the program policy?
I just had a question about the addition for that saying that presenters cannot distribute, you know, like business-related cars, brochures, or flyers as part of the event. So it says they could, they're permitted to have them, but they can't distribute them as part of the event. So they can have them like outside the door, but it's just not.
Yeah.
And was that something that came back from legal, or is it?
No, I think that's always kind of been the, the way that you, we have to handle programming at the library, right? So if programming is at the free public library, right? So it's, it's free to attend. So if somebody's like trying to market something to you, it kind of loses the spirit of, of, you know, having a free program. But if somebody's genuinely interested in your product or service, they can go grab something, right? But, but it's not a sales pitch. And I think if somebody's handing you a promotional material, that's a sales pitch. That's why it's written that way.
Okay, that's fair.
It's pretty standard practice that usually there's like a table at the exit door or something so people want to, but like Erin was saying, they can't be in your face with it or promoting themselves. But if you've attended a presentation by, that happens to be by a local business, they can't promote their business or hand out anything or take, take names or anything like that. But they can put some brochures or something by the door so people can just walk right by and not look, or if they're just, they can take some. That's pretty standard practice.
Okay, so, I, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd say we're ready to entertain a motion to accept the current changes of the program policy as included in the packet.
I'll make a motion to accept the Grafton Public Library program policy.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any, any further discussion?
Yeah, so I just want to take a look at the current policy. I think this is meant to replace an existing policy. I'd be surprised if it wasn't.
Oh, you mean it's not an update?
So the program policy on the website was last revised in 2018, so here you go.
Yep.
So do you, would, do I need to amend my motion?
No, I don't think so.
I would just, commentary, right, questions, commentary, that's all.
Yep.
Yep, good, that's it.
There's no other discussion? By roll call, all those in favor of accepting the program policy?
Prabhu, I.
Rachel, I.
Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, I.
Chris, I.
Declare the motion carried. It's exciting. Thank you to the policy committee and to Jean for reviewing that. It's obviously very important policy for the library to have and it's great to get through one of the important policies.
Yes, and in terms of, you know, next meeting, I don't know that it's all, all that productive for Prabhu and I. And Prabhu, you're going to continue on, on the, on the policy subcommittee, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Because our next meeting is in, is in November and two of our members will no longer be at the library. So I would advise, if it's okay with the board, that we won't meet next month, but we'll plan to meet at the next available opportunity once we're able to get, you know, the director to join the policy subcommittee.
Yep, I think that's, seems okay.
Well, thank you both for all your work on the policy committee. Appreciate it.
Were there any other updates from the committee itself? Are you, because I know you guys have that long list. Are we, do we expect to have additional policies that we're kind of almost ready to go for next meeting? Or do you think that's going to wait till the following month?
I think we need to review the minutes and make sure it reflects what's currently up on the website. I think that it does. Kim, do you know who would have made the policy edits to the webpage? In terms of what to, what to leave up based on the board, how they voted?
I would have that in my files.
Okay. So who, who's able to take that responsibility of updating the policies on the website? Is there someone that's designated that already, or?
Do you mean when?
Like if it doesn't happen before the end of the month? Do we have a, do we have like a?
That's right. It really has not been sorted out. Jean and I need to meet.
I know Jean said the webmaster is a mix of many different people.
Yeah, yeah. Also, as another little twist, Erin, which I discovered later, it seems like these policies are listed under the children's services, which we didn't even know they were also there. So there's, there's no alignment with what's happening with web changes and that's really something that has to be addressed because I just saw them, but like, I was looking for something else and I went, oh, I thought these were taken down. They were taken down in one place, but not in another. So there really needs to be something more centralized. As far as who can actually do the web changes, there are two people who are fairly able to do it as a pretty basic platform, but I don't know how far their skill sets go. I wanted to actually put an image there and to do that, you have to actually put in a ticket to the web platform and it's a big thing, so I'd end up putting it, I didn't want to put it in there and be stuck in the middle of something. But I think that, and Kim and I are working really hard to pull all these together and see where they align, but sometimes they're union positions and sometimes they're not and you have to be very careful about crossing that. So we're, we're working together to make sure.
So there's no particular job description that includes webmaster responsibilities, okay?
So where, you said something about listed under children's policies. Is it somewhere on the website?
I saw it somewhere. Sorry, I meant to get back and I got pulled in 100 directions. When I was looking for something under children's services, I saw policies there. They weren't necessarily children's policy and I don't remember exactly where. I can find it and send you the link tomorrow.
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so moving on to the agenda is the director's report. So Jean, thank you for putting that together early and sending it around.
Of course.
I guess we'll let you decide on how much you want to go into in detail.
Sure. So I sent you, one of the things that, you know, continues to do well, I'm, I'm very pleased and proud of the staff. They are all, they notice if there's a hole and they'll say, do you want me to cover the welcome desk? So everybody really understands the value of it. And there's been some incidents lately that we really need to, it's just certainly promotes the idea of why we have to have people at the, at the website. But it's, they're very friendly, they're very good at what they're doing. They send people to other areas if they need to be. So I just thought I'd put that chart together and you could kind of see some of the data that we're collecting. Also, if you're doing your strategic plan, that's something that you can sort of, it's a little piece of something, you can start there and see if that's how you want to, how you want to assess that.
I would just interrupt you there. Thank you for putting that. Because we, I would say in the past, we've gotten this yes/no list that you've probably heard about. And this is exactly the kind of information that's in there. So it's really nice to see both what we say yes to and what we say no to.
Thank you, you're welcome. These other, there's no vote, I wasn't sure at the time, I meant to take that out. So there'll be a temporary reduction in hours for the teen room. It's mostly, it doesn't, nobody loses hours or somebody's going to be out for a while. I can't go into detail about that, but there is no, there's no negative impact for patrons because it's morning hours, so we're still covered. The afternoon people will shift. And if it's a half-day, we'll cover it with additional staff, you know, that, you know, when it wouldn't be open. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it, but there really isn't anything that the board needs to do. We've taken care of it proactively, so it should be fine. It might be five or six weeks, I'm not sure, but it's, it's covered. So I just wanted to make sure. We'll be putting some sort of note on the door and probably under teen services on the website. So I'm sorry, Carrie, did you have?
Oh, yeah, so, so the door itself will remain locked?
Yes.
So people won't be able to?
Yeah, and there'll be a note there. If somebody really wants to get in to get something, they can go into borrower services or administration, we can let them in.
Great.
So just wanted you to be aware of it, but it's all taken care of proactively and it shouldn't be a problem.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? So are the lessened hours then while like the teens are in school? Is that the idea?
Yes, yeah.
So when they get out, it will be open?
Right, and so during, like if it's a half-day or something, or no school, it will, it will be open at like 10:00. I don't think they get up too much before that.
No.
Yeah, they don't know late, 20. They had a half-day today, actually.
Yeah, and we were prepared and it was busy. I was down there a couple of times and it was busy and everybody's kind of doing their thing, so it was good.
And I don't know, I don't have a teenager anymore, but I don't know what social media sites they do, but it'd be great if like notification was done on Instagram or in addition to the website.
Yeah, I think Instagram and, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so building the grounds, I'll go through a few things here. I noticed that you put on your, that you noticed that blue chips were painted by the door. So I have to say, I'm very impressed with, Maintenance is very responsive and it's been, it's been good working with them. The, I don't know if you noticed, but there's little signs that say, that handicap sign above the buttons now and it's even has Braille on there. So I put those in about a week ago and like, it's a simple thing, but it's an important thing and I probably should have done it sooner. The steel columns are actually called pylons. So this is probably something you should vote on. Maintenance had contacted me, Pat, who's, he's head maintenance. They're recommending that they be painted for visibility and for visit, visibility areas. And there, they are in other parts of the town as well. They recommend yellow, which is, I guess, the only color you're allowed to paint them. So it's either that or they can put some covers over them, but they're kind of expensive, like $600, $700. So I didn't want to give the go-ahead. I wanted to make sure the board had some say in this. I recommend that you do that because they know what they're talking about and let me see if I can tell you something.
Can you like give us an idea where these steel columns are?
Yeah, they're right in front. When you're going into, not in front.
Oh, outside the building.
Yeah, so there's steel columns right now, you can, you can.
The ones that keep like, would keep a vehicle from going into the building?
Yeah, and the chargers, like, right next to the chargers. So I think there's like a dozen of them or 13 or 14 or something like that.
Is it like, is it brushed metal, though? Brushed seal metal?
It's, it said steel posts, so I'm not sure what. But they, they know the kind of paint to use to paint them. I asked about what maintenance would be involved and it's just a yearly kind of just make sure they're stretching them up or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They're kind of like, it's.
The things that keep like a vehicle from going up onto the.
Yeah, so it's more for visibility.
Oh, way over there, yeah, yeah.
So there's a few of them, actually.
Yeah, there's at least a dozen, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just, before I gave them the go-ahead, I just wanted to run this by you. And also because the chargers are there, they know, recommend, they saw a couple of times people driving up to the charges actually hit the posts a little bit, too. So, so I think it's a good idea. I, like I said, I didn't want to give the go-ahead unless the board.
I think that's probably something we could, we could even just vote on tonight.
Yeah, especially if it's something that facilities and DPW recommends.
It's a safety issue. I, I make a motion that we provide the approval to paint the steel columns outside the library yellow as recommended by the town.
Seconded.
Yeah, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Would that, so would that be our DPW that does that? Okay, great. All right, hearing none, vote by roll call. Prabhu?
Prabhu, I.
Rachel, I.
Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, I.
Chris, I.
Declare the motion carried. Thank you, Jean, for bringing that to our attention.
You don't need to do anything, but I thought I would mention this because it came to our attention at the welcome desk. A patron was saying there was an issue with the bubbler and the water was brown and should change the filters and all of that. So I contacted DPW and they actually came and took it apart and said, well, these don't have filters. They're filtered at another location, so when they get there, they should be fine. So it probably was due to hydrant flushing. And so I said to the staff, whenever we notice this hydrant flushing, just go there for the next couple of days and run the bubbler and it should just cycle through. So just in case you hear any, there's nothing wrong with the water or anything.
How long ago was it? Because there was that, that flooding that happened yesterday.
Yeah, this was maybe two weeks ago. Is that when they were, about, about two weeks?
Yeah, they've been doing it the past few weeks, I know.
So just in case it comes your way, that's, that's the issue there. They don't have filters because, and they made sure, they took them all apart. And so it's, it's pretty much up to code with the bubbler, so we don't have to do anything.
Great.
I was there for the quarterly elevator inspection and that's all set. I also uploaded the latest certificate to the, the town website that holds all of those and also posted in the elevator because that hadn't been done. So I caught up with that as well, so that's all set. Quarterly biblioteca, just, that's just something that we use with our system, just mentioning that there was an upgrade. It's also related to the book drop outside, which we had a little bit of a problem with, but that seems to be okay now. So I highlighted, I told Kim we should have a drumroll because the bikes are gone. So there's that. And I have to give credit to DPW. I had to follow through with social media and posting and all those things and tried a couple of avenues and then, then I asked DPW, I said, it's time, can you just take them? So they did. Building inspection, so it was, our annual building inspection was, was due, so I attended with them. We went around for about an hour in the building and looked at a lot of different things. Most of them were relatively minor, but still important. They tested all the security lighting. There are some issues with some things on top of shelves that were too high to the ceiling. It has to be at least 18 inches down because the sprinklers would be impacted. So those were in like the children's room and the staff was great about accommodating what, what we needed to, to adjust. We took care of those. Unfortunately, they had to take down some paper decorations because they're flammable materials, so they took those down right away. I have to call the gas company for inspection for the hood over the stove, so I will get to that. The sprinkler room was the part that we failed on because it's full of shelving and all kinds of stuff that can't be in there because firemen are coming in with their apparatus, they couldn't even get to the, you know, the sprinklers. So we're working on that. Already started taking some things out. I asked each of the managers, I accompanied them down there. I said, if there's anything here that's yours that needs to be kept, we'll put a sticky note on it and make sure we find a place for it. So, so they were, they were good about that. There's a lot of stuff that's really, it's just rugged things. Maybe you'll get fixed one day and it never will, so, so I'm just going to have them take all that. I hope to have that all finished, you know, by next week and I'll give you an update on that.
Is that, the sprinkler room, is that back behind the kitchen?
It's by the teen room, if you go into the teen room, and the, where the video games are, there's a door.
Oh, so it's the, it's the old furnace room, okay, thank you.
There were a couple of others.
That's right.
It's a very weird entrance, isn't it?
Yeah, there's like a little tiny room, and then you go in, and there's another door out there, and, yeah. So, I'm working on that, hopefully that will be finished by next week. So the carpet cleaning, from the time that I started here, I've been hearing about the carpets, and I agree, they really, really need cleaning, especially some places in the children's room and the teens area. So I contacted somebody I know, who I've used many times in the past, and they do a phenomenal job, because it's more than, it's more, it's more than surface. You have to get in there with the right chemicals and the right equipment and, and, you know, all that, so. I did get a quote, I'm hoping that you will approve that, so I can get that in the queue before I, I leave. The quote came as thirteen hundred and something. This includes all of the children's room, with a special attention to those heavily soiled areas. It also includes, includes quite a bit of the teen area, around the circulation desk over, and then down where the tables are, it's very soiled. So they came and, and did a walk around with me, and then, and came up with the quote, so it's, I thought I brought it with me, sorry, it's thirteen hundred and...
And they looked at the rest of the carpeting, and they didn't think the deep clean was needed?
Well, I thought we would start here to see, I mean, it's cost a lot, and I don't know if you wanted, there is, there's also areas upstairs over by the tables. So I don't know, I think maybe we'll see how this works out, sometimes stains have a way of popping back up after, and hopefully that doesn't happen, but. So my suggestion was, and I talked to the teen services and to Sarah and children's, is that we do it the day before the Thanksgiving holiday, because it takes a couple of days to dry, because it gets pretty wet. So they would empty out as much as possible, things into the community room, at least for children's, so they can get in there and clean. They need access to water, and, you know, there's a whole bunch of things that have to happen. So that would be my request, is that you vote, it would have to come out of state aid, and that we could have a check, they like, they want to get paid when they come to do the service, so I would want to have the check ready.
And the children's room didn't have any programs or anything that would be?
No, no, Sarah and I worked together on that, and if there's something, they probably still could fit it into the community room, reading stories or something.
Yeah, can you remind me, the Thanksgiving weekend, are we open on Saturday?
They are open on Saturday, we were just talking about that.
So they would clean it on the Wednesday?
Thursday and Friday, yeah, so it gives two days, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, who, I guess, who is the vendor?
Um, it's Pol Cleaning, they're out of Chelsea. So, and I guess if you say fourteen hundred, we'll cover it, because it was thirteen something, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Did you happen to get a comparison quote?
Uh, I did not.
Yeah.
I've used them a number of times, and I, if I was gonna be longer, I would have done that, but I wanted to take care of much money, these things that I could, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've discussed in the past, I think at previous monthly meetings, about doing a, a cleaning a couple of times a year, so.
Yeah.
It's definitely worth it.
I think it's a good strategy to, you know, try them out, like doing a portion of it, and if we like them, then we can renew it.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to, to fund from state aid carpet cleaning by Pol, I think you said something?
Pol, Pol Cleaning, P O L.
Pol Cleaning. In an amount, I'll say up to fifteen hundred, just in case it's a little bit higher.
Second, motion made and seconded, any, any additional discussion?
I have a quick question, are they fully insured?
They're better business rated, and, yeah.
And you've used them in municipal buildings before?
I've used them at least seven times, and I'm convinced of, they do a real good job. It's actually two brothers who own the company, and they're very meticulous about their work.
And they're large spaces, so I, I'm not, I, I asked, I just asked a question about comparison, but I'm assuming that's a competitive quote, because they're very large spaces.
That's actually, I think, a very good price, the children's room is sixty by sixty.
Yeah.
And then you have the whole, and they have to bring their hoses pretty far over, and, you know, so I, I think it's actually a very good price.
I'm, I'm quite out of date, but is the gaming room flooring done?
Yeah.
It is.
Yes.
And that's by it on the model.
It's not carpet.
So that's not carpet anymore.
Okay, so the heavily soiled parts are not that area, clearly.
Correct.
But I think that's where the majority of the drinks were, right, and that's where most of the spills were.
No, if you walk between the entrance to the gaming room, that whole hallway, and actually, a lot of the side things are.
Leading up to the ga, gaming room, and then the tables off to the right.
Yeah, they're, it's pretty soiled.
The gaming room may, may or may not have been the worst, but it's, there's plenty everywhere.
Yeah, sorry.
And the children's room, I think you had said the parents with coffees and stuff, like kids bounce into them and things spill, so.
And even from a sanitary perspective, getting it cleaned. Do you know, are there any, in the teen room where we've had the water leaks, is there any staining of that carpet? No? Okay.
So over by the door?
Yeah.
The carpet's sort of pulled up, so.
Actually, is that the picture that?
There's a picture, yeah, the picture in there.
Oh, I see, yeah.
I know the water's been coming down in sheets in front of the doors.
But you can see, even in that picture, you can see some of the stains, so, okay. Um, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, vote by roll call?
Prabhu, I.
Rachel, I.
Doug, I.
Carrie, I.
Erin, I.
Chris, I.
I declare the motion carried.
So I don't, this is just a recommendation for something to think about, and I did talk with Sarah and Sean about it, is to consider a no-drink policy, I know that's not easy to, or water only, or something. I know that, you know, Sarah gets frustrated, because they'll spill a lot of coffee and don't even tell them, so they can't go over there and try to. There'll probably be some stain resistant on top of, after we clean, so it might be good for a little while, but just maybe consider something, we, we can't say that without that sort of teeth from the board to, you know, to put in there. According to Sean, most of their stain is not because of drinks, but I think it's probably at least half. He says it's foot traffic, and that might be too, because they come in with boots, and, you know. So just as, you know, I guess no discussion now, but I would, I would maybe suggest that you consider, you know, discussing that in the future, to have.
Yeah, I don't think, we don't have any food or drink, no, no food or drink policies in any of the rooms, do we?
No.
Any of the rooms in the library, okay.
We do have a food and drink policy.
We have that food and drink policy, right?
Library, yes.
And is that for library in general, or just for programs and meeting rooms?
Nope, it's for the library in general.
Okay. Okay, I would say, suggest that, yeah, we bring that up maybe at the next meeting, or just consider it. Yeah, thank you.
Under technology, I think that I kind of mentioned this before, I've been, well, the technology issue is going to be a big issue at some point. As of now, the cataloging librarian needs a replacement on her computer, so I've got that in the process. The town is changing IT companies, so it's kind of not sure where to go at this point, but I do have that in the queue. And then, moving forward, I think there will be more. I'll try to get more information as feedback before, you know, while I'm still here, but it's, it's kind of a bigger project than what I can do quickly. Kim and I have been working through the security card authorizations, so I'm gonna set all of those before I leave, so that all of those, they have to be set with dates and times for everybody. That was never finished, so it's kind of half done. Also, Carrie, you'll be happy to know, there's a way for you to have a card, and it will work. And I'm going to get that set up before I leave, and it'll be kept at the director's desk, and so it'll, it'll encompass a bigger timeframe, so you won't get stuck with the, you know, and there's also a verbal code that everybody should know that they didn't know, in case you hit the wrong button. If you do, the alarm company's gonna call the police right away, or me, and I don't want them to call me anymore. So I'll, if you want to stop by sometime, I can, I can tell you, but there'll be a card for the friends, and it will only be activated to when we know you're gonna come, so I'll get the dates to I know when you're coming for the book sale, and then I'll set that ahead of time, so you'll be able to use it when you need it.
And that's all done by the, the computer that's in the director's office?
Uh, yeah, we have to.
That console there.
Yeah, we, we have to go in and set everything, there's names in there that have to, you know, termination dates and all that stuff, so.
So, um, it sounds like there is capability to have a temporary card, and you can control the in and out, that's great. And does it, and then it obviously will track, like it'll log whenever that card has been used?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Because I know we've been, we've been looking to, to kind of finish the after-hours event policy. In one of the bottlenecks there was, is the security and how we would get in and out of the building after hours, so, great. Thank you.
Outdoor book return, wasn't accepting books for a while, we called a technician, so it's working now, just technology seems to always keep us busy. Amp up, I know you've probably heard this before, I've been working on amp up for a couple of weeks now. One of them wasn't working, and then two weren't working, and now three aren't working. And they don't send a technician out to the site, you have to keep going and flipping the circuits and taking pictures, and you key our QR codes, and go back and check it again, and we're still not there, I got another email from him today, so there's some more things I need to do tomorrow, I'll try those, but as of now, three are not working, I don't think that's acceptable. But I'm doing everything I can, they, they don't come out, they just try to do everything there, which means you're running around to do all these things. So I'll continue working on that. I also discovered that this lease is up in August of 2026, this was a five-year lease signed by Beth, and the library is in charge of the chargers, it's not the town. So at some point, you'll have to decide what you're going to do, about that. I'll find as much information as I can, it seems, it's kind of elusive, but they would have that.
Be interesting to know, like, what the town does, like, and can, can ours be included, because it doesn't really seem like a librarian, a normal librarian job duty to service.
Right.
You know, charging stations for.
Right.
Especially if Amp Up, Amp Up has other stations in town.
Yeah, I, I don't know about the others, I just discovered in my sort of, you know, trying to figure it out, that we actually, the library actually has the lease.
Well, thank you for letting us know, because I didn't realize that it was so time intensive, so.
And maybe once they get settled and working again, it'll be okay, but it's late, it's the last few weeks.
The municipal center does have a different company, that does their charger out back.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it might be worth looking into to see what they're using, and if they're happy with the service.
I think so.
Yeah, it would make sense if, if they could get combined with the, the rest of the town units.
I've been passed along to different technicians, it's so far not productive, but I'll, I'll get there. I'll send it, I'll send a sort of like a last update of some of these things, so you'll know where I'm at with it. State aid report, that was submitted on time, locked and submitted on time, the library's in full compliance, so you should, well, nobody knows anymore about where the money's coming from, but you, I would anticipate you'd get between fifty and sixty thousand in two increments, like you usually do. That you'll probably find out in January, depending on where they are, with, they do them in batches, you know, they go through all of them, so there shouldn't be any problem with ours.
And I just would thank you again for doing that, that was one of the key responsibilities of the interim director, and we appreciate that.
Yes, you're welcome, it was, it was quite a challenge, because there were so many. It was inconsistent with people who had done it, and some of the numbers weren't exactly the way they should have been, so I had to go through the back door with MBLC. They had to change them from the back end, because there's calculations built in there. And so we worked on that, and they redid them, so moving forward, the calculations will be correct, and they won't have to correct as many things as I had to this year. However, Baker &amp; Taylor has gone out of business, and Baker &amp; Taylor is not only a book vendor, they're also the ones who manage the data for the whole, the whole data system for it. Last time they changed, it took two years to resettle, so, and I don't know who they're getting this year, but the good news is, everybody be making mistakes, because when they transfer over, the questions aren't exactly the same, or the data doesn't carry over exactly. So there'll be a lot of assistance from MBLC for the new person, if they're, you know, and, and everybody will be kind of trying to figure it out at the same time, so. So whatever I put in this year isn't necessarily gonna match up for what next year, but.
So when you say manage the data, do you mean?
It's the software, sorry, we input, they, they have the whole software system that we input in, MBLC contracts them.
Got it, thank you, so they'll have to figure out a different system vendor.
Yeah, so well, MBLC is, I'm sure they're all over that, I just don't know what it is yet, so. So I received five thousand dollar donation from the friends, thank you, and I sent a card to the friends, so.
And they were so appreciative, like, they said, we gotta thank you now.
I sent it snail mail, so they could.
Yeah, no, they, they noticed and they appreciated it, so.
Thank you, yeah, well, I think friends are great, in every library, you can't do without the friends, so, that's very generous of them. So, um, I think the only other things, just, I just sent these in the package just for your informational purposes, because somebody asked me about soliciting, and, you know, there is a difference soliciting versus nomination papers, which people are allowed to do at the library, and the staff didn't seem to know any of those guidelines, so I kind of filled them in and made sure these are the latest ones that have been produced, so.
That's very interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's a miniatures display, when you walk in to the left, right, there's the lighted case there, and Grafton resident Ronald Pichetti, I'm not sure if I'm saying his name correctly. He came in and asked at the welcome desk, and they came out down to get me, and we talked about it, and he had shown some pictures to Kim as well. So they're really nice, they're very, very intricate, so he came in, I put a table there with a tablecloth on it in front, and if you get a chance, go and see them, because they really, there's a lot of interest, people are going over there and looking, it's in a glass case, so it's kind of a nice friendly thing to see when you come into, so I just wanted to point that out. I think that, just a couple of updates on the library side of it, other side of it, is they're ready for Halloween, they've been working really hard on that, got all the ducks and all their, so they're, they've been working hard with, hard with that. Upcoming, there's a baby sign language program coming up, I won't be here, so that kind of came through me, but I'll hand that off to Sarah or to the director. Sort of an interesting note that Mary informed me, that every month, the patrons are completing a one thousand-piece puzzle. And this historical part is set out there, and I gave approval to order a big puzzle board, and it's got slide-out trays for the pieces. And so people are going there, and they're completing one a month for a thousand pieces, so it's pretty good.
I think I have a one thousand-piece puzzle on my dining room table from Christmas. So that is impressive, once in a while.
I always say, I'm gonna do puzzles, I don't do puzzles. Also, just a note of interest, Heidi represented the library at the food, at the food market, farmer's market, and Heidi being Heidi wore her Charlotte's Web costume, and of course, all the kids came over to see what she was, and so, and she gave out, you know, some things, and you know, represented the library, told about programs and so forth, so, so that was a good thing, she was able to, to get over there. I guess if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions on the report, or for Jean?
No, very thorough, I appreciate this, so thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
The, the chart, right, so those were sample questions. I see, so, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, uh, wrong way, but.
I think it's flipped, yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's just Adobe doesn't seem to do it right. No, I forgot, he's, this is all I need. So car, so car charger, is that twenty-three? Which one is the blue for car charger, or is that nineteen, or seventy-six? It's one of those, or forty-nine?
I know, it's a little bit, it flipped a little bit, car charger is, see.
I'm assuming it goes in the same order, so car charger would probably be the nineteen.
Oh, nineteen, yeah.
Nineteen, yes, sorry, because that bumped up a little bit.
And so, what kind of questions are we able to answer for people? What kind of questions would you get about car charger?
They say, I will inform the director.
Is it generally like, it's not working, or I can't figure it out, or?
Mostly that it's not working, they know how it should work, and it doesn't work.
Yeah.
So sometimes they're wondering, we've checked, is it your app? You know, we make sure the app is, you know, to speed and everything, but it's not the app, so. So I put those notes out there, saying we're working on it, I thought they would be more temporary than they are, the notes are still there, but at least they know we're working on it, and hopefully I can take them down soon, so those are mostly, it's, they're, they're not happy that the chargers aren't working, that's what mostly.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a really great resource for the community, and they use it, and it's interesting, because some people will build it into their routine, you know, of either errands that they're doing at the library, hopefully, or in and around the common, or sometimes they'll leave it overnight, which is kind of weird.
They do, yeah.
But, hey, you know, it's, it's free charger, if that's what you want to do with your car, that's okay. Yeah, my, just as an aside, my, my manager came to, to visit in Grafton, and he just bought a new electric vehicle, and and he, I said, I'll charge at the library while we're, you know, we're hanging out, and we went over to the farmer's market and stuff, and and it was his brand-new car, and he did not like leaving it in a public place like that, I'm like, don't you leave your car in public places all the time? You know, and so he has like the cameras around the car, so he's like, looking at it on his phone. I could tell he's nervous, I gotta get my car, really, it's a library, like, that's too.
Leaving your child for the first time.
Yeah, I mean, the best people visit the public library, right, you don't have to worry about anything, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jean, for that, I think this is probably a good time to acknowledge the letter that we got from Kim this week, or last week. I like, at least from my perspective, Kim, you've been wonderful as a scribe for the trustees, keeping us on track, keeping track of various task lists and making them electronically available, has been really incredible over the past many, many, many months. So we're definitely gonna really miss you. At the library. Yes.
Yeah, and always doing it with a great smile, just like that.
Yeah.
No, I really appreciate that, so doing it cheerfully. Sometimes it's not always a cheerful task, to work with us, but.
And having to re-watch these to check the minutes again, that's, that's, that's good. And we wish you, certainly wish you good luck with your next endeavor. All right, moving on, next thing is the walkabout, Chris.
Yep.
I'm so sorry. Is this the last?
I think it's.
I don't think we have to do anything. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I thought it was part of my.
Yeah, I think we have another agenda item for that.
Not a big deal. Jean's already mentioned a handful of these, so, yep, three of the four EV chargers are broken, but as she noted, there are signs up. There is a stone on the patio, it's maybe the same one that was written about previously, that is still kind of falling off. This is on one of the brick. Um, this is on one of the brick walls um off by what I think is the one of the transformers that kind of has some of those pylons around it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there was much that was spread across the walkway, kind of in the typical places we see around the book drop and the various doors kind of facing the inn. So I don't know if that indicates there's maybe a continued issue there or not. I didn't get a chance to get there during some of that rain, um, so I don't know.
Do you know if any remediation was done?
We had some of that gutter work, didn't we, Doug?
So that gutter work actually never got done.
Okay.
Um, because the company that was had came out here and looked at it.
Yeah.
Has gone quiet on me, and admittedly, I have not looked at it in the last month.
Okay.
Um.
Um, so then maybe it sounds like it is the same.
I can add that. I can add that to reach back out to them.
Um, so, okay, that's that's less surprising then. Um. The two bikes that I noted are now gone, apparently, so we can cross that off, too. Um, I did notice on the door that there was probably just from signs and stuff that there was kind of some noticeable amount of like tape and stuff on the on the glass doors. Um, uh, one of the librarians has noted that there were in the children's room that kind of humidity had been a little bit greater, and they'd actually had a one that I can't think of the name of the bucket of.
I can speak to it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, yeah.
Yes, um, I had gone in, because I just kind of keep an eye on all parts of the building, and I had opened the door to the family room. Uh, oh, it smells a little, not even really musty, but just kind of stale, and um. And looked around, and and Sarah and I did a little walk-around, too, and so we decided there were some charcoal absorbent things, so we put some buckets in, but there's also one hanging in that room. And it we could see that it was collecting water, and it definitely worked, because I went a couple of days later, and the smell was cleaner, so it's kind of a. Small fix, but it worked.
Mm-hmm.
And there's the buckets, so you can't see them. They're up on shelves just to try to absorb some of it, so.
Yeah, they were not very obvious. Um, they had to point them out for me to notice them. Um, but I don't know whether that indicates, you know, something needs to be done with the dehumidifier whenever we do our regular maintenance or whatever it is that way.
Yeah.
Um, I did kind of, this was a day or two after that really strong rainstorm, um, and I did check the children's room door. There was no issues there, and the librarian had said it also had been dry. Just kind of checked that. Teen room, similarly, when I went in, there was a fan that was there. Um, the floor was dry. Um, Sean was busy with with some teens uh in the kind of three D printing room, so I didn't get a chance to ask if it had been wet, um, but it seemed like it may have been. The on number ten just noted that the brick wall had been repainted. It does look really nice. Um, and uh, one other thing I did notice, this was on the exterior walk-around, that there are some cracks on the. Uh, the storm windows were actually on the interior of the windows. Um, it wasn't clear to me if those were tempered glass or not. Um, they did seem somewhat new, which would made lead me to believe that they are, but. Um, some of the cracks were fairly large, um, so that may be something we want to look at.
Which rooms are that?
So it's in the historic reading room, and it's the pictures were hard to get, um, but it was. Both of them were one on the large windows that are facing the common.
Yeah.
And I think it's the one, I think there's two on either side of the door, if I remember correctly. I think it's both of the ones right on either side of the door.
But at at like eye level, not like the ones that are.
One is way up. It's it's the ones at eye level, but the window's really large, so it's one of them is, you know, probably at ten feet up. So I don't I don't think from a, it was hard to see, except that the light reflected in the right way. Um, so I don't think from a a visual or aesthetic standpoint, it's a concern, just if there's some kind of safety concern related to it.
Kim, do you know if those are on that punch list?
Uh, I will add them, and they are linked in the recent um updated agenda if you wanted to look at the picture.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at the pictures, yeah.
I'll be sure they're added on that.
That's great.
So that is that.
Anything else on the?
No, that is that is that is it in totality.
Well, thanks again for doing that. Um, are you, does anybody else want to volunteer to do that, or Chris, you are you enjoying it enough that you can do it again?
I mean, I'm I'm happy to pass it off. I'm happy to keep it. I think it's whatever others like to do. I can wa- do it for a couple of months with someone.
Yeah.
It's not overly complex, but I'm happy to show people what I've done. I think Aaron and John both did that for me when I started it, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, I would encourage any of the other group trustees, if you guys want to join Chris to do that.
These are great, Chris, the photos.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always helpful to be able to see everything.
Yeah. Yeah, I I can do, you know, a walk-around with you.
Yeah, well, in November, I mean, we can figure out whatever time works.
I think it is good, you know, to have different eyes. You've been doing an awesome job, but um it's good to.
Yeah, no, happy to.
Yeah, and also, so when winter months come, right, I think Doug, when you used to do the walkabout, you would alternate internal, external.
Inside, outside, yeah.
So don't feel like you need to do the same, you know, walkabout each time. I know when I did it, I went through the parking lot, you know, because I know we're custodians of the building, but also it extends, you know, to the parking lot, too, and. I noticed a couple of things um that are probably on that punch list as well, but.
All right, uh, any other questions for Chris on the walkabout?
Nope.
All right, if not, uh, moving on to the agenda, new business, um, library director update. Um, so I guess on behalf of the trustees, I'm certainly very excited. Um, that the candidate Katrina Ireland Billado has accepted the um. Position of library director, so she's going to be starting on November third. Um, we went through the contracting process with the help of the town administrator, um, and that got all signed off um late last week, um, so that's all set. Um, so we're excited for next steps. Also, would like to thank Jean. I mean, Jean came in, whatever, two months ago. I'm trying to think how long it's been already, three months ago already?
End of August, yeah.
End of August, yeah. Um, I mean, you could just tell from her director's report, her interim director's report, that she's um handled a lot of stuff already in her three-month tenure. Um, certainly, as from my perspective, we really appreciate all your experience that came in for the interim director. Um, all the stuff you kind of quickly handled and took care of. I know there were various challenges at different things. Um, but um you've taken care of a lot of stuff. I do think that the library's in a much better position than it was three months ago. Um, and we're excited um that it's going to be really ready for a the new director.
Thank you so much. You really like, you did address a lot of a lot of issues.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve as interim. It's a great town, great library, got to know the staff, you know, really well. Happy that I could help.
Yeah. Um. I think the combination of you and Kim um worked really well. Um, you obviously, just your task list that you were able to get through. Um, is pretty pretty impressive. I think um, I think any one of these things probably could have easily just been like stuck at the bottom of the list and just kind of not addressed, but you you. Paid attention to the little details as well and taking care of them.
Yeah, I appreciate you both really just making sure we're in a good place.
Yeah. Um. I think that's probably it from the library director update. Um, if there's no other questions, moving on to the onboarding plan, um, that's going to actually be Rachel.
So I'm going to take us through a few things. So we'll talk about the onboarding schedule, the additional support we're looking to add in, and then also the goals. Feel free to like pause me as we go through his questions. Uh, so when we onboarded Jean, we had a schedule, and the feedback we got was we basically checked all the boxes, so we're going to be leveraging that same one. Um, if anyone has any other feedback or changes, please send it my way. We can add them in. The couple changes where we're going to be making is, um, especially with the holidays coming up and schedules being busy. Doug and I are both gonna meet with her weekly, so that way, if someone can't make it, we at least have that continuity between as they're getting onboarded. Um, the other piece, too, is when when Jean joined, I know we had a few folks from the board meet with Jean about specific items. We're going to make sure that everyone on the board has a chance to to set up a meeting with a one-on-one as well with the the new director, too. So both of those will be included. Um, and then just for reference, the types of things on the onboarding is making sure. That they have meetings with the town administrator, the other department heads in the town, um, department head and staff, making sure there's a a clear meeting schedule, so everyone. Has an intro and and the director just doesn't have to come in and schedule it all, so we'll we'll look to get all of that teed up as well.
Um, so, um, I think you asked for input or feedback.
Yeah.
On the onboarding. Um, I don't know that it's not in the packet, but is it something you can share with the board?
Yeah, I can share with the board afterwards, and then we can include it in the next packet for transparency, but um I can definitely send it out, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And I mean, same situation we've done with the previous director and with the interim director. It's really important for the board to participate and support. Right, support the library staff, but especially support the library director. Um, so we want to make sure that um each of the board members are meeting with her and getting to know her and. And so on and so forth.
And then in terms of additional support, I mean, we we spent a lot of time talking about facility needs and and all the work that has been done and and the punch list, so. Um, Doug and I had a chance to to chat with the town and one of the recommendations they had on how to make it easier on on the director when they came in. Is to put in an MOA that just outlines over the next year how we we expect the director to work with the town, so it would be as simple as. Like, and I know Jean knew someone to clean the carpets, right, but say you have to clean the carpets, and you're like, who do I go to, right? They would go to the town administrator. The town administrator would help connect them with solutions or people to help them, and then if it needs additional funding or is outside of like. A maintenance need fix, it would come to the board for approval still, so um things like if we're going to paint a wall or something, right, that would come to us if it's a different color, right? If it's something as similar as the the specs, like, they can help move that along, and so the idea is it should help alleviate some of of the work on the director and expedite. Um, so we will.
This is all brand-new?
Yeah, and so we'll talk about it in November, so there'll be like an official document, but I I just wanted to kind of raise it for everyone's awareness, like as we talk about. How to streamline and support them. There's a lot of smaller maintenance stuff that that probably doesn't need our our engagement on, and if anything, maybe we'll so we're slowing down the process a little bit. So it's really about how do we build those efficiencies and and streamline it. Alan, Doug, if there's anything else.
Well, I think, uh, you know, and I was going to go through some of it in the next agenda item, but. Just really trying to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the trustees, the library director, and then the town itself, and trying to make sure that it's pretty clear. That relationship between the three different organizations, right? Obviously, from the trustee's perspective, um, we're working with the library director. The library director then works with the staff, and the library director works with the town. Um, just trying to clarify that, some of that.
And one more thing, what does MOA mean?
Yeah.
Oh, it's sorry. It's like, basically means I'm adding an amendment to like the charter or whatever it is, so it's a member random of.
Understand.
Agreement.
Agreement.
Agreement, thank you.
So, but what the document will do is, we talked about doing putting a time limit on it, right, so we'll try it out for a year, see how it works, and then if it's not working, we we can adjust there, too. Um, so we can have a full discussion on it. There'll be a document, I believe, we'll send in advance so people can read it. But then people want to be surprised by it, but I think it's one of those things, as we say, how do we support the director? It will just clarify roles and responsibilities. Um, the other thing I'd I'd love to vote on tonight for the group is when we talk about support mechanisms, right? There are going to be needs for the new director around mentorship, labor or council support facility for different needs, and so. Kind of clearing a bucket, I'd recommend around five thousand dollars that they can use to pull for for different support needs, just to make their their life a little easier as they're coming in and. And getting their their feet under them. Um, so we can cover that at the end of it, but um. Really, again, looking about how do we give the director the resources they need to be successful. Um, and then the last piece we already talked about for support is really around the November through November, we'll still. Like, sign all the bills and stuff, so that way we can be in there and talking through the bills and answering any questions, and and again, it it's really so we can be there. To help as Katrina onboards as well throughout the month. So if there's any other additional support, we tried to brainstorm, like, oh, what are those those couple buckets that can be challenging, and how how do we add a little more support around it? Um, but those were the three we're thinking of.
I just have a question, so I think you having like your little fund makes sense. Uh, I guess what are the parameters around, like, how that money can be spent?
Yep, so and Doug, feel free to jump in here. I think it would be anything around like. Like consulting fees or things around like, like information for making better decisions for the the library and moving it forward, so it's really about. Kind of information and outside support and consultant where needs are.
I think the biggest piece was the labor council. Um, so the town has, right, we have a labor attorney that the town goes to with any labor questions. The library director would need to maybe consult with that person for any union questions, the collective bargaining agreement, so this was a suggestion by um the town administrator. That for just some of those questions about the agreement, or if there was any questions about the staff, the union staff, that they could um go to that legal counsel.
And so it would be, it wouldn't be our town council, it would be.
Well, it's the same.
Booby.
Labor council. Is that what the title was, labor council?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, but.
It's the same labor council the town has, but this would be a bucket of money that would be paid for by state aid if the if the trustees agree with that. If the trustees don't agree, then they would have to go through the town's bucket of money, and Evan. Obviously, Evan needs that for a lot of other pieces, too, so he was like not sure there would be enough money in there for all the needs, uh, and if we could uh fund it separately, that would be the best.
Okay, and I guess maybe think about it for budget for next year, too, so.
And it's it's a use as use it, right? If if it's not used, then it's not going to get spent, if if there's no calls to the labor council.
And we'll still see it in the bills, too, so as it comes through, so if there's anything.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, unusual, we'll have a chance to question it.
Yeah, and I think whenever you have a new leader coming in, right, there's certain like, like things you just need to help you make a better decision, and so as we talk about what do we have in place for that support. Um, so that the, again, the support with the facilities and then the board there to talk about bills and have that little more foot traffic for them. Um, we're hoping that gives a a good support system.
So is that something we want to vote on tonight, if possible?
If we could, if people feel comfortable with it.
Yeah.
Um, so I I guess I'll make a motion um to open up five thousand dollars from state aid to be leveraged as a support mechanism for the new director around mentorship, labor, council support. Facility port. Um, and then I would just say anything outside those three areas, um, just to get sign off from the chair before making any other use of it.
Are you, I'll second the motion?
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? It's definitely something a little bit new to this board.
Um, so I'm not ag- against the idea. Um, I just, I think it's a little too soon potentially to um. Maybe vote on something like this. I I think I'd like more time to kind of digest it before I'm ready to vote, but if the board wants to vote tonight, then um. You know, that's just my personal feeling, because it's not something we've done before, and it is, you know, Carrie brought up a great point. It is a good chunk of money. Um, and I'm just thinking, is it needed right now, 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 right? Or can we vote on this at the next meeting? You know, is there an urgency with this vote is what I'm trying to come up with, because I'd like a little bit more time to kind of digest and understand, you know.
Yeah.
What it is we're doing.
And I guess I would, to your point, the whole five thousand dollars, like, isn't going to be used and spent in a month, right? I think it's more about giving them some funds, so as they come in, they have that flexibility, so. I'd even be comfortable amending it to a thousand dollars, and then we can adjust for and give time for people to think and. And work through, and again, don't expect that to be used right away, right, but when we talk about bringing someone in, I think especially with the level of transitioning happening, right? Like, there might be some additional support needs.
Yeah, I think for something that we're trying is new.
Yeah.
Um, certainly, the smaller amount would be, I think, um, better, and we'll see how it gets expended, right? And then we can always come back and um vote more if it works out.
Yeah, I mean, right, she's starting at the beginning of the month, likely not going to be a lot before our next monthly meeting anyways.
Which is why I was thinking we would vote next month, especially on such a large sum.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Yes.
Do you want to reduce it, or do we want to wait till next month?
I guess I open for other people's opinions once I prefer.
I'd love for her to have some funds at start.
Okay.
And maybe we can then have an intention to, you know, vote it up to the five thousand dollar amount at the November meeting or something like that.
Okay.
Which doesn't have to necessarily be tied to the motion, but.
Yeah.
So did you actually amend your motion?
Not yet, gathering opinions, because I don't want to have to do too many amendments. Oh, Carrie, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, I I definitely would like her to have some money available, and um and if if everybody's more comfortable having a lower amount, and then we can revisit it. Also, too, if we, I like the idea of the lower amount, because then we can kind of see, like, what are the ideas of how it's going to be spent, so we can, you know, make sure that we're on the right track, so I I like the idea of reducing it to the. So we can, you know, make sure that we're on the right track, so I I like the idea of reducing it to the one thousand.
Perfect, Praveen?
I I like to understand this a little more, so I I'm in the camp that if he can give wait till next month. Um, I don't think thousand dollars is going to be enough, even if he need it. Um, but I would like to have some more time to think through this, understand this, and then I give the right amount or portion the right amount for this.
So perhaps we, um, perhaps we do push it off to next month, next month we are planning on having the town administrator join us. Um, because they can talk about some of these other things we were discussing. I don't know.
Or I prefer to table it.
Or it could be really exciting, amend it and then see where everyone's vote land, we can.
I have a, I guess, um, I I'm just, are there some, I guess, Jean, like when you came in this interim, were there some immediate things that it would have been handy to have some flexible, like some funding, I guess, available? Cuz like, I mean, I I I really like the idea of having at least a little bit of money, so that if there is something that's kind of on the more urgent side, that that we're not totally hand handicapping the person.
Thank you for asking, I think that's a good question. Um, in in terms of, I don't think you know what to spend the money on right away. You really have to assess things, cuz I saw lots of things, but like you could easily spend the five thousand like right away, not knowing that you really have to look at a lot of different things. If you're putting it into those categories of legal expertise and those other things, then um, it might be good, I I didn't need that necessarily. Um, I didn't, there weren't grievances or anything like that that I had to deal with, but you don't, you don't know. Is that where you're thinking that you're?
Well, it just, I was just, I guess, trying to think, you know, like coming in, were there certain things that like, oh, if I had, you know, a little bit of money, like that would have really helped me a lot when I first kind of walked in the doors.
I think that um everybody told me a lot of things that they needed in their departments, and so which were mostly valid. Maybe don't, maybe don't tell them the director has money. Just kidding, no, it just, there's a, there's a lot, and you really have to kinda put all that into perspective. And and the fact that I didn't have money, I don't feel like it held me back, because you look to see, I'm always about like, well, what do you do without money? How do you, how do you navigate? So I think it's, would be helpful for her to know that there will be funds and to really identify where you want them to go. Because there's lots of things that were, you know, they pointed out lots of things that I would have liked to address. It needs bigger money from state aid to do that, and it's bigger projects. So I don't, I don't think that I was necessarily constrained with anything by not having it. But this will be a permanent position, and so, you know, it might be certainly worth having the discussion. Maybe identify exactly where you think you want it to go, I heard legal, but I I must have missed more, like what other categories are you thinking?
No, I I think your answer is helpful to me, so you had like kind of the core things, like you, you mean, like we're giving you like, you the computer and all that. So maybe it would make sense um to work collaboratively, you know, you're kind of with the new director to to say, okay, we're willing to give some money for these types of things, but what are your ideas, and then kind of work together to fund it then?
Yeah, and we can, we can wait till the next one to do the the vote, if we need to, it'll only be a couple weeks in, I guess I right, at the end of the day, I I feel like we hired the director because we believe they can lead the library, right? And they're gonna have, there's gonna be things that come up, and we only meet once a month, and if it comes up too close to the meeting, can't get on the agenda. And and there, there's a lot that goes into running a library, so making sure they they have that. And again, it's it's not supposed to be necessarily to like fix things on the library, right, they can come back for things like that. But if we're having all these challenges with the HVAC system, right, having some money for someone to come in and give us an opinion if they feel that's what's gonna drive it forward, or help support in what they're looking to do. I, just ensuring we have empowerment for that that leader and the tools is is where I'm coming from, so we can pull it off. I'll, is it rescind my motion? And then um we can talk about it next month, but just, just, I think coming in as it's it's important, there is some money around that, especially cuz when they do come in, right, we're about halfway through our budget already as well, and so I do believe this is when things get a little tighter and you're you're managing your dollars. And so I'd hate for someone not to get the support they needed, because they're worried about budgets towards the end as well. So things to think about as we head in. Um, so I'll move on to goals then, if there's no other topic on on this support. Um, so, simple goals for thirty days, uh, meet all the library staff, board members, and department heads across the town. And again, we'll help facilitate some of these meetings, um, understand the roles and responsibility of the staff, and then build a relationship with the town administrator, so very, very people focused, um, and a little process. Uh, sixty day goals, have a regular cadence of meetings and communications with staff and department heads. Uh, start engaging in policy work, and definitely Aaron open to feedback on that, but I feel like the first thirty thirty days, it's it's hard to lean into that. Um, and then make sure to either attend a friends meeting or have a meeting scheduled to catch up with them, knowing the holidays also get tricky in those first sixty days. Um, and then ninety days, um, is recommending that they'll share back a SWAT, right? It's a, it's a good time once you've hit ninety days to say what's working well, what are our opportunities and threats. Um, and then also um share any key areas of focus they recommend for twenty twenty six. And then we can close it out for that ninety day goal with recommendations on when we would start the strategic plan.
And then budget is gonna factor into the timeframe as well, right? Like, working on budget for next year.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I mean, we're thinking more of onboarding goals.
And that's only through February, when does budgeting start?
Um, that's, the budgeting will start before then, I think budgeting starts in January, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Town meetings in May, I think you submitted it January or early February?
I think it was, I think it was January, so I mean, I I think, I think a lot of the normal activities of the library director doesn't need to be in the goals like that, but um certainly we wanna be able to support her through all that.
I feel like the budgeting is a good one to add, cuz it's a big one, so that would be the first thirty days to start on the budget.
Understand like the
Yep.
the current budget.
Yeah.
And what I would suggest is that, um, I mean, thirty days, we need to have that kind of finalized tonight, of course. It's just a, you know, a plan, right, it's doesn't mean that it's not gonna evolve over time. Um, and then we can review the sixteen ninety with the board, and then talk about that at the end of uh next month's meeting. Okay.
Does feel like high level, good day one, if you're coming in as uh, um, what expectations are?
Yeah, I know the feedback we got from Jean and from the previous director was just that importance of having, you know, regular communication with the staff, the weekly staff updates, the monthly staff meetings, um, so that's, that's what we've, we focused on.
Yeah, I mean, I hit the ground running with that, I had, I think they were not used to somebody being, she's she's still coming to talk to us again, which she's never done. Because I'm very much a communicator and wanted to engage with staff.
Yep.
It's a good part of the job.
Definitely, definitely.
Now, that was a good distinction, Doug, right, to understand that these are onboarding goals.
Yeah.
Right, it's certainly adding in, you know, the budget was a great one.
It's just, it's coming, it's gonna come up.
It's coming, right, but.
Do we have actual goals?
At, that's, I mean, that's a good reason, the board does need to come up with actual annual goals too. Um, so that, to me, would be something more like the sixty day. Um, this board, we wanna give those goals in sixty days, unfortunately, the review is in June, so you know, if we give goals in February, there's not gonna really be that much time for the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, it probably makes sense to still provide some goals, so they're aligned in what we're doing, and then we can refresh. Um, if someone has the previous goals, I'm happy to like take a look at them and see what else we might need to adjust, and then we can talk about next meeting, cuz I, I would wanna make sure that we include that in November's meeting to approve it, so that way they're ready for that sixty day conversation. Cuz otherwise, we won't be getting them till February.
Yep.
To either sign off and give to them, and then then that's really unfair.
Agreed. Okay. Um, thank you, Rachel, for all that um, that work. Um, next on the agenda is the trustee meeting with town administration office, the TA office. So um Rachel and I met with Evan and William yes, that was just yesterday. Um, you know, we've talked about this over the last months, something we've been trying to do for months, but we actually finally got it scheduled. Um, I thought it was an excellent meeting with the TA office. Um, they share our, right, they share our goal, and you know, to get that, the library, you know, functioning as high as it can. And this, you know, just focusing on the mission of the library, um, whether it's, you know, day to day operations, uh, annual budget, um, the the health and welfare of the staff and, you know, everybody, so I think we both share in that mission. Um, so it was a very good meeting, um, I think, um, some of the things that Rachel mentioned about this M O memorandum of, what was the A? Um, you know, I think that's a a nice topic that, you know, we've always had um questions around roles and responsibilities of this board relative to the director and the town administrator, um, so I think it's good to con- continue that conversation with the TA office. Um, I think we propose that they would attend our next month's meeting, and we can start talking about um what that looks like.
Would they have um an agenda item?
They would, I would put an agenda item in, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, assuming they have, I mean, it's a busy season for them too, but assuming they have a chance to kinda draft a document, we were gonna look at the draft and just see if it looks like it was starting to make sense, and then we're gonna review that next month. Um, we also agreed that the meeting was very um fruitful and valuable, and that we would continue to meet with them maybe uh every quarter. Um, so whether that's Rachel and I, or, you know, we mix up the trustees and, you know, have two people attend those meetings, I think would be great. Um, anything else I missed with our meeting last night?
No, I, I think it's just a great moment to connect, right, there's so much everyone's working on, so to to hear what's driving some of the decisions that come from us or from them, it just makes us all better aligned and and able to better support the library, so it was a great conversation.
Great, any other questions for Rachel or I?
Think your update was a little um vague, and I don't know if we're gonna get more meat on next month.
Yeah, I think with the, the, the whole idea around roles and responsibilities, it was intentionally vague, because we don't really know what it's even looking like, cuz it was just a conversation last night.
Yeah.
Um, the idea is to expand on that next month.
Okay.
And I don't even know if any decisions we made next month, it's just gonna be a open communication, and then, you know, maybe if if we wanna go through with this M O A, then, you know, maybe we vote on it the following month.
And I think I though we were, ideally, we'd feel comfortable enough and given everyone the information if we can vote in November, right? If we don't feel that way, we absolutely can push it to December. I think we just wanna make sure that, again, we outline those roles and responsibilities, so everyone can work more effectively. So um, really, I I think the goals of the meeting was to say, how do we wanna work together? And what are some things we should be thinking about, and so I actually felt it was very productive that we came out of it that said, yes, this is really helpful to be sitting down, and let's do it quarterly, and then also we know that the facility piece can be challenging, so let's, let's tackle it first, right? Because how, I think how we envision it to work is also how the town administrator is. And so just, it's about documenting it, right? So I don't know if it will be one that has a lot of differing opinions, once it's all documented. Like, it it seems pretty traditional, and so we'll see what it is, and we'll talk through it, right? But that will be November, and if we need to move it to December, we can. But again, I think it's all about how do we clarify roles and responsibilities, and and a lot of that can't be talked of, like, we need to be talking about that with this whole group, cuz everyone needs to be aligned.
Yeah, I think, I think you hit on something very valuable there, which um I'm glad you mentioned it, was really to talk about this maintenance, building maintenance piece, right? Because, you know, that was a big chunk of what Jean and Kim have been managing with their tenure here, and the previous director as well, and the previous director before that. So, you know, I think I heard earlier tonight, you know, it's some, some of those little things, like maybe the library doesn't need to do those things. It should fall in the town to do that, so I love that conversation, that dialogue, it's really, really powerful.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, like, you know, like things like taking care of chargers, like I don't think anybody would think that a library director should be having to do that, so thank you.
Well, HVAC was one of those discussion points that we all are familiar with, where, you know, a lot of that fell on the director. The trustees have oversight on the um, you know, the steward stewards of the building, right? But, you know, we don't know anything about HVACs, the town has all the contracts, and they have the experience with other buildings. It only makes sense that the town administrator, and they have been supporting us in that endeavor, just kind of outlining things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so stay tuned for that, um, next on new business is the amended Grafton Public Library closing dates, which I know there was a list in the packet. It might have been the last page.
So we just had to um identify, make sure everything was aligned here. The change was Saturday, May twenty third is closed, that's Memorial Day weekend, which is unpaid. Friday, July third closed, and that's a paid holiday, but the Saturday is unpaid.
And here it says, she says Friday is unpaid and Saturday is closed.
Closed, but unpaid.
I think it's the last minute change they need to make with what's in our document right now.
I'm confused, um, the document I'm looking at says Friday the third, Friday, July third, they're closed unpaid. Saturday, July fourth closed, Independence Day. Um, what, what are we getting from Cindy?
Well, it's, a lot of it's union driven.
Yeah, okay.
Historically, when um the Fourth of July falls on a Saturday, the town is closed on the third in honor of the holiday. So it has always been that the library would be closed with a paid holiday on the Friday, and then we'd have that Saturday, July fourth as an unpaid day off.
Does it make a difference, like, I mean, as to which day is paid or unpaid, like?
I think it might, I mean, Independence Day, you would think.
Well, but it's the recognized holiday, right, the recognized town holiday is actually Friday.
Yeah.
And so that's the day that the town employees get paid for, even though it's a holiday, that's correct.
Correct, yes, so we try to keep it accurate to match the town as much as possible.
So then this is incorrect, we need to swap it to be unpaid on Saturday.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a great point, Saturday's shorter day.
Yeah, it's, well, that's what I was trying to understand.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I don't even think that's the case, right, it's just the case that it's the town holidays on Friday, and that's when the rest of the town.
But also, people will get paid for more hours, right?
True, true, actually, you're right.
Jean's right.
Yeah. I think we're saying the same thing, just in a different way.
Well, we're following the the rule, but it does result in more pay.
Well, I'd be willing to make a motion that we approve it with the adjustment that um, the Friday, July third is shown as up, observation of Independence Day, and is lis- and then the July fourth on Independence Day is listed as unpaid.
Yeah, so we could just say observed, instead of unpaid, just change unpaid to observed, and then, and then close, Independence Day would say unpaid.
Did you get that, Kim?
I did, thank you.
Hopefully the last time. We have to know all these too, when I put the dates in for the card access and all that stuff, so make sure this is.
And then on the, at least the version I have, May twenty third is red, in red as well.
And that was correct.
Doug, we have a motion on the table.
Oh, yeah, for July third, thank you. Um, motion made
Seconded.
and seconded by Chris, um, any further discussion on the July third, fourth change?
Did, did you have additional changes to to amend the motion?
That, I, that.
That's fine, we can just do this one.
I see, um, are there any other um, changes to the, if we wanna amend the current motion on the floor?
I think you began to say something and I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Well, my question is, is May twenty third a change?
Yes.
So that change is the same, it's because that day that's in red should be paid, and Memorial Day should be unpaid?
That was just inadvertently left out before, that's why it was added back in.
I see, okay. So it's not a, not a change, then we don't have to vote on it if it's not a change? Is that right, am I hearing that right, okay?
Right, it was intended to be there, just got missed.
But did we vote on the last time, we we voted on it without it, un- you know, unintentionally?
I think my motion was to approve this whole schedule with the adjustments for July, so it would include it as it's shown today with the tweak to July.
Oh, wow, good. So are there any questions on the other red line? All right. Motion made, and it was seconded by Chris, right? Okay. All right, so, all in favor by roll call?
Trouble I.
Rachel I.
Doug I.
Carrie I.
Erin I.
Chris I.
I declare the motion carried, and sorry for that, a little bit confusing, confusing stance there. Great. Looks like the second to last item is Capitol Campaign with Carrie. Do you have any update for that?
Um, no, I, I know, Jean, you had put in the work order to have the table assembled. I wasn't sure, like, if they had responded yet on that.
Well, it's a, it's a ticket system, I just actually was in there yesterday to put a few more things in, and it, it was a normal priority, and they've, I've had to put some other things that were higher priority, but I know they'll get to it, so it's still in there, it's, it's definitely in the queue. And I can, I can see if I can get an update tomorrow, if they know, it would be nice.
Can you remind the board what that table is?
Yes, it's, it's the replacement table for the table in the Friends, Friends Corner. It's, it go, it's a rectangular table across from the window bench. And it's a replacement of a, a table that had been there before, that, that had gotten damaged and, I guess, disposable at some point. So, we're, the Capitol Campaign funded the replacement of it.
Great. Any other questions for Carrie, Capitol Campaign? All right. We do have any public input out there? No public input. All right, so then we have the next meetings. The Friends, that's the, the regular Friends monthly meeting, November fifth.
Which is a little bit earlier than usual, and it's on a, when, it's the November fifth. So, actually, that'll be after our new library directors start, so I'll reach out and, and hopefully, you'll be able to attend that. It is a Zoom meeting, so.
Great. And we already talked about the policy subcommittee likely getting canceled?
Yes, we, we won't meet on November fifth.
And then our next meeting is scheduled for the week before, right? Because Thanksgiving is the twenty-sixth or something? That's not the day before Thanksgiving, the nineteenth.
I think it's the week prior.
Yeah, Thanksgiving is the twenty-seventh.
Okay, great. So, our next meeting is the week before Thanksgiving.
So, while we're on the topic of meetings, right, and agendas, so should we send agenda items to you, Doug? Or are you going to delegate somebody for the next meeting? Understanding we won't have a.
Right, I think for the next meeting, send the agenda items to me.
Okay.
Yep. And then hopefully, in the meantime, we can figure out what our backup plan is for that. Yep, Jean?
A couple of other things, trying to wrap up a lot of things, I would just like to say, Kim and I have been working hard to, I will be leaving lists for the new director, who to contact for certain things that you wouldn't necessarily have on your radar, directions to get to things, how to get into them, where you should go. So, there's, there's a lot of information that I've collected here, so I'll be leaving that. And Kim's working hard to leave information for her successor. And that position will be posted probably tomorrow. I sent it to, Will sent the other one to me, and I said, that's fine, so that will be posted. And so, those go through HR department when they come in, so obviously, it won't happen while Kim and I are still here. But that's, it's in the process of being posted, so hopefully, you'll have somebody soon.
Thank you for doing that.
Welcome.
Well, thank you for the diligence in getting everything ready.
Do you know how many hour a position is? How many hours?
Thirty-five.
For administrative assistant? Oh, fantastic.
And that, that is a, a union position, of course. Great, is there anything else on our agenda? I know we had executive session on the agenda, but I don't think that's necessary tonight, so that's great. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made and seconded by roll call.
Trouble I.
Rachel I.
Doug I.
Carrie I.
Erin I.
Chris I.
I declare the motion carried, and we are adjourned at eight thirty-seven.